Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Marshand?
Here.
Wad?
Here. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you would remain standing, the invocation will be offered by Pastor Jonathan Dinger, representing Grace Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. It's the first council meeting since school has started, so I'd like to offer a special prayer for our students, our youngest citizens and residents, and their teachers. Gracious Lord God, what a privilege it is to be gathered together as your community, as neighbors, as residents, as citizens of this wonderful country. We ask you, Lord, to be especially with those youngest citizens and those our neighbors, our children, as they go back to school, and for their teachers, that you would inspire them and encourage them, that you would grant them great safety, inspiration for learning, joy in the endeavors. And we ask, Lord, that in that great partnership, that you would continue to build the wonderful foundations of this nation in liberty and freedom and in appreciation for the many, many good gifts you've given us. And so, Lord, bless now also those who have been elected to serve us and lead us, and we ask your blessing in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Dinger. Always good to have Pastor Dinger with us. Before I move into Agenda Item Number Three, I'd like to welcome our newest Council Member, Council Member Marshand. Congratulations on the Governor Appointment. That's pretty exciting.
Thank you.
So, not going to ask him, he's a man, a few words. Not going to ask him to say anything.
Perfect.
We may not want him to say it anyway. So, we'll move from there to Agenda Item Number Three, is the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda Item. A, Material Claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the period of August 14, 2022 through August 27, 2022. B, Housing and Alliance and Community Partnership Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Amy Kawahara Rhodes to continue serving as a, on the Housing Alliance and Community Partnership Board. Amy's term will begin September 8, 2022, and will expire September 8, 2027. C, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Rachel Levy to continue serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Rachel's term will begin September 7, 2022, and will expire September 7, 2024. D, Council Decision Approval of Zoning Designation Amendment for Approximately 1.77 Acres of Land at 1591 Xiner Street. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the request from the University LLC to amend the zoning designation of approximately 1.77 Acres of Land located at 1591 Xiner Street from Light Industrial LI to Residential Commercial Professional RCP. E, Council Decision Approval of Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map Amendment of Approximately 22.97 Acres of Land Located West of I-15 and South of I-86. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a request by G. Brandon Ratliff to amend the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map to designate 22.97 Acres of Land located west of I-15 and south of I-86 as Residential R. F, Council Decision Annexing Approximately 22.97 Acres of Land West of I-15 and South of I-86. Council may wish to adopt this decision annexing approximately 22.97 Acres of Land located west of I-15 and south of I-86. The subject property will be zoned Residential Medium Density Single Family RMS and Residential Medium Density Multi Family RMM. G, Council Decision High Line Partnership Short Plat Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a short plat for high line partnership, which subdivides approximately .36 Acres of Land, south of I-86 and north of Amy's Kitchen Facility, into one lot, subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the Consent Agenda, Item Number Four, Items A through G.
Second.
Item Three.
Item, Agenda Item Three?
I'm sorry, Three, yes, I'm sorry.
And I don't know who, sorry, I heard a second, Linda. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Councilwoman Lurick. Would you please call the roll? Wendy?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Four is the Proclamations. We have one proclamation tonight. That proclamation is for Recovery Month, and that it will be read by our Council President, Rick Cheatham.
Whereas recovery from mental and substance abuse disorder, including co-occurring disorders, is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness; and whereas treatment and recovery services for mental and substance abuse disorders and co-occurring disorders is effective, and people can and do recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas addressing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally; and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and encourage those in need to seek appropriate treatment and recovery support services; and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and Recovery Fest invite all residents of the Pocatello area to participate in National Recovery Month activities by driving through on Union Pacific Avenue, behind the Old Town Pavilion in Pocatello, on September 9, between 5:00 p.m. and 6:30 p.m., to pick up a bag of goodies and important information. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, to hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 to be National Recovery Month in Pocatello, and call upon the people of Pocatello to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies, supporting this year's theme, Recovery is for Everyone, Every Person, Every Family, Every Community. The Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration celebrates the 33rd anniversary of National Recovery Month, marking over three decades of spreading the message that treatment is effective and people can and do recover every day.
All right.
Yeah?
And if you'd like to, you're welcome to say something here?
All right, I will say a few words.
All righty.
Thank you. All of you, but now I'm good. I'll just, I'll come up.
All right, I'm Joanne Martinez. I am the Chair of Recovery Fest, and I work at ISU in our social work department, and this is...
My name is BJ Stensland. I am with Aid for Friends, and we participate every year in Recovery Fest as an agency, along with many other agencies. So, I'm really proud to be here tonight with you.
Right, and we thank you for doing our proclamation, or having a proclamation for Recovery Month, and we have an update with our Recovery Fest, and we are actually able to put on the event downtown, so we are going to do that from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We don't have to do a drive-by this year and pick up some bags. We're going to have a band, we'll have some free food, we'll have some recovery resources, and we do invite everybody to come. We just, with the way the climate was, we weren't sure what we were going to be able to do, and we are able to do an activity and a live event, so we're excited for that, and we thank you, Mayor, and the council for supporting us, and welcome everybody to come on September 9, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Perfect, thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Five, is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On September 8, 9:00 a.m. will be a City Council Work Session. September 14, 5:30 p.m., Special City Council Clarification Meeting. At 6:00 p.m., Special City Council Meeting. September 15, all City Council meetings scheduled on that day have been canceled. Other events, half-price dog and puppy adoptions at Pocatello Animal Shelter through September 3. Contact the animal shelter for more information. September 5, city offices will be closed for Labor Day, however, garbage, yard waste, and recycle pickups will continue on schedule. Annual Maintenance for Community Rec Center continues through September 5. The front desk will remain open, but all other areas will be closed for maintenance. On September 9, is, will be the last day to turn in applications for City Council Seat Two and Seat Three appointments. Contact the city clerk for more information. Applications must be received by 5:00 p.m. on September 9. September 11, Grandparents' Day at Zoo Idaho. Grandparents will receive 50% off admission when accompanied by a paid child. Zoo Idaho will remain open on weekends only from September 6 through October 30. And as a reminder, there is an open burn ban in wildland urban interface in our communities and counties. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Six, is a Public Hearing. Zone Map Amendment, 1737 North Harrison Avenue. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by House Buyers 208 LLC, represented by A&amp;E Engineering, Incorporated, for a zone map amendment to rezone approximately 0.41 Acres of property from Light Industrial LI to Residential Commercial Professional RCP. The subject property is generally located at 1737 North Harrison Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request following a public hearing held August 10, 2022. I declare the public hearing open. Council, has there been any ex parte contacts? Seeing none, then I would call for A&amp;E.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Wyatt Radke. I'm with A&amp;E Engineering. We have a zone map amendment application for a property located at 1737 North Harrison Avenue. The proposed amendment is for three parcels currently owned by House Buyers 208. The existing zoning for this property is light industrial, and the request is to rezone the property to residential, commercial, professional. Two of the three parcels are currently undeveloped, while the other currently has a single-family home. The block that this property is located on currently has a mix of single-family homes, warehouses, and commercial buildings, and the surrounding blocks consist of single-family homes to the south and east, and commercial and light industrial buildings to the north and west. Within a three-block radius of the property, there is a variety of zoning districts, including industrial, light industrial, general commercial, residential, commercial, professional, and residential high and residential medium zoned areas. The City Code describes residential, commercial, professional as a district that may be used to serve as a buffer zone between residential areas and commercial and/or industrial areas. With the proposed property being located within a buffer zone, residential, commercial, professional is an appropriate designation for this piece of land. The Zone Map Amendment will allow for the development of two lots, which currently are bare ground, into multifamily housing, which will help with the current housing shortages, especially for affordable housing. And also, the area is designated as mixed use in the comprehensive plan, and the residential, commercial, professional zone fits nicely within this designation, and there's no need for an amendment there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Council, any questions?
How many housing units are you talking about?
That's still to be determined, but the idea would be two duplexes and one fourplex, potentially.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, you may be called back up in a minute, so.
Thank you.
Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carl Anderson, City of Pocatello, Senior Planner, for the record. As previously stated, you have before you tonight a zone map amendment request to rezone 0.41 Acres, more or less, located at 1731 North Harrison Ave., from Light Industrial to Residential Commercial Professional. There are three parcels within this request. One parcel is separated from the remaining two by the adjacent alleyway and located at the intersection of North Main and Gibson Ave. The remaining two parcels are located at the intersection of North Harrison Ave. and Gibson Ave., which has the 1737 North Harrison address. Of the three parcels, one of those parcels is developed with an existing single-family home, which is considered illegal non-conforming use in the light industrial, which would be illegal non-conforming use in the light industrial zoning district based on when it was built, where single families are permitted in that zone. The applicants request to rezone the property is consistent with the current Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map designation of mixed use. The list of uses permitted in the RCP zoning district included a variety of residential uses, from single-family to multifamily, that allows for a development consistent with the existing higher-density single-family development in the surrounding area. The commercial uses permitted in the RCP zoning district serve to reduce conflict between residential and commercial land uses, and would integrate well into the surrounding area. Many of the commercial uses permitted generate less of an impact when compared to those permitted in the existing light industrial zoning district. The proposal will align with the purpose and intent of the RCP zoning district, which may be utilized to serve as a buffer between residential and commercial, commercial and industrial areas. Aligning the site with the comprehensive plan, reducing the nonconformity of the existing residential use, and buffering the residential neighborhood to the south and from the commercial, industrial nature of Gibson Ave. would serve the community's best interest. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on August 10, during which the commission recommended approval. All public notice requirements have been met, and staff has not received any written comments at this time. In consideration of the application, staff concludes the proposed Zone Map Amendment is compliant with Pocatello City Code Section 1702170. Should the council wish to recommend approval of the, or wish to approve the application, staff recommends the conditions listed in the staff report. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions, council? Okay, you did say, Carl, you said that you had not received any written correspondence. When did that time period end?
As of today.
As of today?
Yeah.
5:00. Okay, Madam Clerk, have we received any?
No correspondence.
In your office? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then I would look for any testimony supporting the application. I'd look for any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application?
Sorry, you went really fast. I just wanted some clarification as undecided. I wanted to know what kind of businesses or whatever was located around this property, if it's more industrial, or if there's other homes. And if you're going to be having children in these homes, if it's more industrial and trafficked like that, then I would be opposed to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, if that could be clarified, I'd appreciate it.
All righty. Thank you. Then I would ask the applicant if you know of the businesses that are around there?
I can't clarify the exact businesses and industrial buildings that are there at this time.
It looks, it looks like, I might just add right here, it looks like on the map that, you know, you're a block away, anyway, a block away from the railroad tracks. And then I don't know what businesses would be to the north, but everything on the, to the south of it, it looks like is residential, single-family.
Yeah, Crystal Chanda, A&amp;E Engineering. Would there, it's a great buffering zone between residential, commercial, industrial, and the houses will be for rent, and so we can't say who's going to rent those out.
Okay, all right. But it does look, I might just clarify, it does look like there's probably more residential as you're going to the south in that buffer area, so.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Then I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides before you how you wish to proceed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Six, the Zone Map Amendment for 1737 North Harrison Ave. Excuse me.
Check.
With all conditions included, thanks, Rick.
If you were done or not?
I was trying to get there. It was rough.
Having a hard time there. Okay, we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Hearing Annexation and Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, South Valley. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by the City of Pocatello's Planning and Development Services Department to annex, zone, and provide a Comprehensive Plan Map designation for 165 Acres, more or less, of land located north of Highway 91, south of South Valley Road, east of Bannock Highway, and west of Interstate 15, I-15. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request following a public hearing held August 10, 2022. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jim Anglesey, Long Range Planner for the City of Pocatello. Before you, is a city-initiated annexation and Comprehensive Plan Map designation request for the subject property, including 165 Acres, more or less, of land, of which 15.22 Acres are owned by Juniper Hills Country Club, 10.4 Acres are owned by Idaho Power, and the remaining 139 Acres are publicly owned. The request includes designating all publicly-owned land, as well as Idaho Power property, on the Comprehensive Plan Map as public, and zone said land to public lands facilities. As stated in City Code Section 173420, the purpose of the PLF zoning district is to satisfy general public needs by reserving land to accommodate public utilities, facilities, resource protection areas, and other public infrastructure deemed to be of local, regional, state, or national importance. Property owned by Juniper Hills Country Club is proposed to have a zoning map designation of residential and zoned residential medium-density single-family, which is consistent with the zoning for the rest of the golf course. While the RMS zoning district would normally not permit outdoor recreation use, City Code Section 173500, Note 19, provides an exception to this provision permitting the uses, improvements, developments, and activities associated with the Juniper Hills Country Club, golf course, and facilities in the RMS zoning district. This request is consistent with the goals and objectives of the current Comprehensive Plan, which includes but is not limited to the desire to protect and enhance Portniff River watersheds, including aquifer recharge areas, wetlands, streams, and rivers, from activities that may be harmful to water quality and quantity, ensure that the public is provided the opportunity to access the natural resource amenities located on public lands throughout the valley and surrounding area, support the development and implementation of plans to restore the natural hydrology of the Portniff River and its tributaries throughout the entire watershed, and to protect newly discovered and designated archaeological sites until appropriate measures can be taken to document and/or preserve them. Notification for this public hearing has met all state and city noticing requirements, and in consideration of the application, staff concludes that the proposed annexation and Comprehensive Plan Map designation request is compliant with City Code. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Council questions for Jim? Council President Cheatham?
Does the annexation by the city of land we already own give it any additional protection?
It puts it under city regulation. If there are any future development, it would be under our review, other than Bannock Counties, except for Bannock Counties.
But we already own the land.
We do already own the land, but it would be underneath the city's standards rather than the county's standards.
Any other questions for Jim? Okay. Jim, because you are staff, have we had any correspondence?
No, we have not.
Any written correspondence? And Madam Clerk, have we had any written correspondence in your office?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. And I did forget to ask, so I probably need to ask before we go any further, is, has there been any ex parte communications? Our attorney didn't kick me.
I knew you'd get there.
Okay. Thank you. Then with that, I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application?
Nikki Taysom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. I just had some questions, since this is under county with Idaho Power and Juniper Hills Country Club. Those are both private entities, so will their tax base change at all? And have they been contacted, and have they given written approval for this? And if not, then I would require that, as a citizen, that they, being impacted, should have some input in that. And also, with the Juniper Hills Country Club, I know, like with other, the golf course up at Fairway, they, is it a lease or a rent situation? I can't remember, but I know in the past, we've paid for the watering and landscaping, so is that the situation with Juniper Hills as well?
So, I can answer that one very quickly. The Juniper Hills is a private club, and we don't pay for any watering. They, it's all 100% them.
They're private.
So, that's a private group.
Okay, and so, have they given approval for the change? Will it affect their taxes?
I know that they've given approval for the changes, but I can have Jim come, he's nodding his head, and so.
Thank you.
Yep. Just a minute, Jim, before I have you get up there, I've got to finish this. Any others uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application? Okay, then, Jim, if you want to explain, I think the Juniper question is taken care of, but the Idaho Power and the tax situation?
I don't know about the taxes. I don't know how that would all work out, but they have given permission as part of the agenda packet, they have received, we've received affidavits from both Idaho Power and Juniper Hills to annex into the city.
Okay, super, thank you. So, they have been contacted and are taken care of. All right, then, with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Decides before you, council, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Lurick.
I move that we approve the annexation and Comprehensive Plan Map amended in the South Valley area as outlined in Agenda Item Number Seven.
Check.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Eight, is Ammon Park Subdivision Final Plat. Council may wish to consider a request by Rocky Mountain Capital LLC, represented by Connect Engineering, to approve a final plat application to be known as Ammon Park Subdivision. The proposed subdivision is a replat of lots 2 through 4, Block 8, Inglenook Subdivision First Edition. The proposal calls for subdividing 0.81 Acres, more or less, into nine townhome lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat application with conditions. Council President Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the Ammon Park Subdivision Final Plat, as outlined in Agenda Item Number Eight. Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Before I ask for a vote, I just want to clarify, we are not talking about tearing Ammon Park apart and doing away with Ammon Park. That park is going to remain where it is. I've had a few people concerned about that. This is not doing anything to the park itself. With that, Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Bid Acceptance Purchase Agreement, Creative Bus Sales LLC, Incorporated, Bus Transit Department. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following request regarding the purchase of four light-duty mid-sized buses. A, accept a low-responsive bid received on July 27, 2022, from Creative Bus Sales, Incorporated, for the total bid amount of 541... review, the following agreements, contracts for city employee insurance benefits during fiscal year 2023. A, Blue Cross of Idaho Medical Insurance Renewal Agreement reflects a 14.2% increase in premiums. And B, MetLife Dental Insurance New Agreement reflects a 20% decrease in premiums. All costs for insurance contracts have been itemized in the fiscal year 2023 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lyric?
I move that we approve and authorize the mayor's signature, subject to legal department review, the agreements and contracts for city employee insurance benefits for fiscal year 2023 as outlined in Agenda Item Number 9, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Lyric and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lyric?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Bid Acceptance Purchase Agreement, Creative Bus Sales LLC, Incorporated, Bus Transit Department. Counsel may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following request regarding the purchase of four light-duty mid-sized buses. A, accept a low-responsive bid received on July 27, 2022, from Creative Bus Sales, Incorporated, for the total bid amount of $541,220. And if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Funding is available in the Public Transit Department fiscal year 2022 budget. Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the bid acceptance and purchase agreement from Creative Bus Sales, Incorporated, for the Public Transit Department, Items A and B, as authorized in Agenda Item Number 10, including your signature on all applicable documents, all subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by, I apologize, we have a motion by Council President Cheatham, and a second by Councilwoman Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11 is an ordinance rezoning approximately 1, we have two ordinances, 11A is an ordinance rezoning approximately 1.77 acres of land located at 1591 Xiner Street, from zoning designation light industrial LI to residential, commercial, professional. Counsel, how do you wish to have this ordinance read? Counsel member, or Counsel President Cheatham?
You got the name right, anyway.
I got the president part right, too.
Mr. Mayor, I would move the ordinance Agenda Item 11A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, rezoning approximately 1.77 acres of land located at 1591 Xiner Street, Pocatello, Idaho, from zoning designation light industrial LI to residential, commercial, professional, RCP. Said property being more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, providing for the repeal of all ordinances and conflict therewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11B, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan land use map for property located west of I-15 and south of I-86 by designating approximately 22.97 acres of land as residential R. Counsel, how do you wish to have this ordinance read?
Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance Agenda Item Number 11B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have Counsel President Cheatham didn't want to get in on that one, did he?
I waited.
You're still going to get that President Cheatham in there. With that, we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending the comprehensive plan land use map for property located west of I-15 and south of I-86, Bannock County, Idaho, by designating approximately 22.97 acres of land as residential R. Said property being more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, providing for the repeal of all ordinances and conflict therewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is three minutes per speaker and a total of 15 minutes for this agenda item. We have two, and so we'll get started with Nikki Tason.
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho 83201. I've been reviewing the June 30, 2022, claims report, and under Idaho Open Meeting Law, it's required that you give an actual report, and I want to know why that's not being done anymore, and that this should be provided to us at each meeting. And under the first article of the Constitution, it states, "No money shall be drawn from the treasury but in consequence of appropriations made by law." And the Fifth Amendment states, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for, excuse me, public use without just compensation." So in reviewing that, that also referred to that the city has over $100 million in long and short-term investments and bank accounts with third parties, including the State of Idaho Investment Pool. This is money that people should have in their own pocket, so that we can pay our own bills, have our own homes, do the things that we need to do. It's not the government's job to hoard money for any purpose. You set a constitutional budget, you present it to the people, we approve or disprove it, and you take a census and divide it equally. Not certain ones pay more and others pay less or none at all. And as I mentioned before, it's not your job to be in the garbage business or recreation business, Development Authority, building streets, having all the Caterpillar equipment, Neighbor Works, Ross Park Aquatic Complex, the library, transit. We have good people that are losing businesses, even just taxi drivers, excuse me, I'm trying to hurry, and Development Authority, Neighbor Works, those are socialist programs. That's not done in America. We pledge allegiance to our republic as a nation under God with liberty and justice for all. It's not happening here, and I'm seeking to bring people to the table. And we just had a proclamation about the recovery month. You all know I've been in jail a lot of times, and I've talked to those boys and girls. I've been out on the streets, I've been in the bars, the hookah bars. I'm demanding the city, and our chief, and our prosecutors, to pull every alcohol, commercial alcohol, tobacco, vape, porn, lottery, casino, satanic violent witchcraft shops, Xbox, from doing business in this town. That's what leads to people, domestic violence, addiction, crime. We have boys and girls, children locked up in juvenile detention with alcohol, tobacco, and drug offenses and drug paraphernalia charges, or violence because they act out when they can't take it anymore. We have tobacco shops that sell the drug paraphernalia. We had a hookah bar open for a year and a half that had alcohol, tobacco, and drugs and prostitution trade with children and youth. So I'm calling on you. We all took the pledge of allegiance to this America. We, the people, are the sovereignty. You're the servants. I'm calling everybody to the table. What do we want Pocatello and America to be?
Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll move on to Jan, Jan Maris?
Who is not pleased.
Hello, I'm Jan Maris from North 10th Avenue, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. I just wanted to give you a quick representation of me and my neighbors about sowing and reaping. You reap what you sow. So if the City of Pocatello is going to sow, a lack of follow-through of complaints for us, it's our builder, and with me and my neighbors, and the City of Pocatello is going to reap more complaints. If the City of Pocatello is going to sow builders who are not honest, the city is going to reap dishonesty. If the City of Pocatello is going to sow a turned head to policies and procedures, especially with new builds, inspections, CFO, erosion, what to do with so many complaints about a builder, the City of Pocatello will reap disaster. That's all.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Do I sign here?
That was, we've got, we've got.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Jan. Thank you. Thank you for being with us tonight, and another congratulations to our newest Council Member, Council Member Marsha, and we appreciate you being here. With that, we are adjourned.